Welcome to the November 23 meeting of the Penfield Board of Education. This meeting is called back to order at 6:30 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is recommended that the board approve the November 23, 2021 agenda as submitted. So may have a motion and a second that the agenda of November 23, 2021 be approved as submitted.
So moved second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I have a, it is recommended, may have a motion that the board approve the consent agenda, including approval of the minutes of the November 9, 2021, meeting as submitted, acceptance of the recommendations from the Committee of Special Education, acceptance on the recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, acceptance of the recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes, and the request to approve the following bidder, New Wave Energy, per BOSI's cooperative bid. So may have a motion and a second.
So moved second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. It is recommended that the board approve the treasure report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, the general fund budget status report, the school lunch fund cash report, and the school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending September 30, 2021. So may have a motion and a second that the reports be approved.
So moved second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. There are no special reports today, and there is no student representative report today, which brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Putnam.
Thanks, Ms. Elidge. I do just have a couple of student staff honors and then some updates, district updates, and then I'll turn to Dr. Driffl for some business updates this evening. First is School Related Professionals Day. So the district celebrated School Related Professionals Day on November 16. This day honors the behind-the-scenes heroes who help our schools run smoothly every day, and we're so proud of these Team Penfield members and thank them for all they do to support our students and staff. Also, the Fall Musical, PHS Drama Club staged its first musical in two years over this past weekend, and congratulations to the cast and the crew of You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown, for their hard work and outstanding performances. I can tell you I went to Saturday's matinee with the family, and it was absolutely incredible. Just such talent. It was great to see, sit in the, sit in the audience and watch a PHS musical again. It really feels like longer than two years, or they'll be working on a Spring Musical as well. Just a little bit of hashtag Team Penfield. Dr. Driffl may not know, but we've talked here in our board meetings about staff shortages, which we do have in a number of areas, including food service. And so it does take a village, and this photo is Dr. Driffl actually lending a helping hand. They were short-staffed and hopped in. Bay Trail, I believe, Dr. Driffl? So thank you very much. Dr. Driffl did not know I was going to take this photo of him, but he did a great job. So thank you, Dan, for helping out. And again, just kudos to our incredible cafeteria staff. As we do our updates later this year, we are seeing, thanks on behalf of the federal program of free lunch, really record numbers of lunch purchases, and so thank you to our incredible cafeteria staff. Couple of updates from me, COVID updates. We watched the news. We are all aware that the COVID-19 rates are continuing to rise in Monroe County again. So the three bullets there are the last three weeks. So on like the third, again, we post all this to our website. We had 10 active cases. On the 10th of November, it went to 25, and last Wednesday it was 39. And we are, again, continuing to see this. However, we continue to work really closely with the Monroe County Department of Health, and our current COVID safety protocols are preventing exposures in school. And all students are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccination. As a district, we will share information about vaccine clinics and whatnot. We do understand that it is a decision, a family decision, but we did want to point out as a, as a district that, you know, that those COVID vaccinations are there and are proven to help. But again, we know that that is an individual and family decision. New York State Department of Health test to stay. So as of December 1st, which is going to be the Wednesday we get back, the district will begin offering the test to stay option, which was first outlined by the New York State Department of Health and then supported and clarified by our Monroe County Department of Health. What this is, is allows unvaccinated students who are placed in mandatory quarantine by the County Department of Health will have the option to attend school each day if they agree to the following. The student must have no symptoms. The parent or guardian must provide approval for the daily testing. The student test must be negative. It's a Binocs Now test, the rapid antigen. And that will take place in the school health office, and the student must continue to follow all the existing school-based safety protocols, which is the distancing and the masking. Additional information on test to stay can be found on our coronavirus information page right on the district website. We've emailed this to families. Just as a note, our original email went out yesterday that we would be starting the Monday after break, and emails going out this evening, if it hasn't already gone out, pushing to December 1st after really consultating with Monroe County Department of Health and ensuring that our nurses will be ready to do this. Again, this is for just unvaccinated students who are placed in mandatory quarantine. The reason I mention that is that vaccinated students are not put in quarantine anymore. Based on those flow charts that are up on our website from the county, if you're vaccinated, you don't go into quarantine by the Department of Health. Instead, you monitor, and if you have symptoms, then you test. But again, this is an opportunity that when students go out on a quarantine for seven days, they can now actually come to school and test negative and stay in school. We're able to do this with the partnership with our county because the county in our Monroe County are not seeing students who are quarantined then becoming positive for COVID. And so again, because of our protocols of masking and distancing, this is a way to continue to keep kids where they should be, which is in classrooms with teachers. We're also, just an update on our return-to-school rapid PCR test. Now, the district is continuing to prepare to offer the rapid PCR test to assist students who need a test to return to school. And we're hoping to begin the PCR testing on December 6, but we will notify parents and guardians as soon as an official start date is established. This is for students who display COVID symptoms either at home or in school and then are required by the State Department of Health to have a negative PCR test before they can return to school. The rapid PCR test will provide a result in about 30 minutes rather than 24 to 72 hours. So right now, if you have symptoms and you get sent home, you have to have a PCR, negative PCR to come here. If you go to a pharmacy, it might be 48, 72 hours before you get your result back, and that means you're not in school, you're at home. And so this will allow us to get, turn that PCR around faster and get kids back into school who are symptom-free and are negative for COVID per that PCR. So this is lots of different testing. So this is one slide to just kind of give an overview of the COVID-19 testing that will be offered in our district. And please note that a more detailed slide of the three different types of testing options and more information on test to stay is on our website under the COVID-19 tab. So just three different types of testing. We are continuing to do school surveillance testing, and that is the antigen, the rapid antigen test. The purpose is to monitor for the presence of COVID inside schools. So this, the only people getting tested is about 5% to 10% of students whose parents or guardians had opted them in earlier this year. And so the nurses are continuing to do that and calling random students down and keeping track of that. All that information has to go to the, to the state through a portal. And that's the school surveillance testing which will continue. That's not to test students who might have COVID. That's to test students randomly throughout the day to monitor the presence of COVID. And we continue to see very few positive tests through the school surveillance testing process. The next is test to stay that will start up next week. The purpose is to allow asymptomatic, unvaccinated students who were placed in mandatory quarantine by the county to continue in-person learning at school. So students who are on quarantine would have to be symptom-free, and they would have to test for seven days after exposure. And the students may attend school and school sanctioned activities, but then remain in quarantine otherwise. So they can come to school, they'll go directly to the nurse's office, they will be given an antigen rapid test. They'll have to wait in the nurse's office for 20 minutes when that test result comes out. If it's negative, the student may go to class. Again, all masking and distancing requirements stay in place. If positive, they would have to go home, and then the county would be putting that student into the isolation because they would have tested positive for COVID. Again, we're very hopeful that this will allow students on quarantine who can then come to school but with a negative test. And then the next testing type we'll be running in early December will start is return-to-school PCR. The purpose is to allow students who had symptoms but are feeling better to return to school in a timely fashion. So lots of testing. I can't stress enough our nurses and the work they're doing. We are also, thanks to Dr. Kenny, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, in his office, working on hiring. We are in the process right now of hiring substitute nurses that would be coming in on a daily rate to run the PCR test. They will be administered in district office, not in the schools because students with symptoms do have to leave the building, but then once feeling better could come to district office on a schedule and be given a PCR. And if it's a negative PCR, can go back to school the next day. So instead of having to wait 72 hours or longer, they'd be able to return potentially if they're feeling better pretty quickly. Again, only with a negative test. Again, all of this information is online, and we'll continue to share this information with families. A shift from COVID-19 and just a quick update around equity and access, something that our district is, looks at as a priority. So our district hosted its second community conversation on diversity, equity, and inclusion on Monday, November 15. I'd like to thank Mrs. Potter, who's here, our Assistant Superintendent for Equity and Access, as well as Dr. Maloney, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. Thanks to Mrs. Potter, we were able to secure Dr. Sean Eversley Bradwell, who presented on educational equity in Penfield Central School District. Dr. Bradwell is a board member in the Ithaca Central School District, our city school district, and is also on the faculty of Ithaca College. Very thoughtful presentation, great information, and also the thank you to the community that did attend and asked some really great questions, and we were able to have a dialogue around this important work. So just to save the date, we've shared this before, but to save the date for our third community conversation on diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's going to be held Monday, March 14 at 6:00 PM. It will be a virtual meeting again. And the Penfield Central School District Diversity Equity Inclusion Core Committee continues to meet monthly with subcommittees meeting every other month. These committees and subcommittees have multiple stakeholders, staff, students, parents, community members, and really just continuing to talk about how we can make sure we're supporting all students here in the Penfield Central School District. And then more information can always be found on our website. If you select the Equity and Access Office from the drop-down Departments menu right on the main page, some great information, and we continue to keep that updated. And shift again to a special vote. Our 2021 Transportation Facilities Project vote that Dr. Driffl will probably mention as well. We're going to do two slides on this perhaps, is Tuesday, December 14, right around the corner, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM here at the Penfield High School gym. And applications for absentee ballots are also available between the hours of 8:00 to 4:30 Monday through Friday, except holidays, meaning this week, from the district clerk, Sharon Urkfits, in person or by calling 249-5702 and requesting an application that would need to be completed to get a ballot that would need to be submitted to district office. Are there any questions on my COVID equity and access or special vote?
Board members, I'm starting, Kristen?
I just have a question about the test to stay. Are parents, do we know yet, are parents bringing the kids to the school and waiting for the results?
That's a great question. So the question is, under test to stay, students in quarantine have the option to take a rapid test in the nurse's office. The students' parents may drive them to school, but students may also take the bus as long as they are wearing their mask on the bus. That comes directly from the Monroe County Department of Health because not all families can transport their child to school. They felt very comfortable with not seeing a spread on school buses, and I can continue, our bus drivers and our parents continue to encourage that students wear masks on buses. So the short answer is parents may drive them and wait with them for them to get the test, or they can take the bus, and if they unfortunately test positive, then they would be called to come back and pick them up. And we would follow all of our COVID protocols. So there is isolation room that students would have to wait in, remain masked until their parent or guardian picked them up. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Catherine?
Tom, did you say on the PCR test that those are going to be done at the district office?
I did, yeah. So once we were able to get, so we right now have the PCR, rapid PCR machines and test cartridges in our possession from the county. We're awaiting the official training we need to have from the county. And so we're in line to be, to be trained so we can start offering that. We're going to offer that at district office as opposed to in the school because based on the county's, the county's approval for the rapid PCR, students have to leave. If they have symptoms, they have to go home. So this isn't, I have symptoms, like maybe I've got a cough and a runny nose, and I'm not feeling good, I have a fever, I come down, I get tested. If it's negative, I go right back to class. These are students who, in any typical year, would be sent home because they have symptoms of something. And, but unfortunately, it's not just wait 24 hours like pre-COVID. It's you need to have that PCR. So by having it at district office, we can staff it with two individuals as opposed to having six individuals if we had a machine at every building. So we're going to have two nurses in district office in the basement. We're still working out the specifics, but parents will be able to call, and then a nurse will come up the stairs and take them right downstairs. They won't be in district office to get the PCR test. And then if it's negative, they can go back to school the next day.
Okay, thank you.
So students would still be out, but hopefully for one day. If they're feeling better, not longer. In many cases, the students don't feel good, and so they wouldn't come to school right away anyway. They would want to stay home. Same things, you know, you can't have a fever for 24 hours, including, you can't have, you know, fever reduction medicine. But there are cases, we know, where students are getting sent home for symptoms, and ultimately, it's not COVID, but the rules by the state are that we do have to send them home. So again, the rapid PCR is going to help us get kids back into school much quicker, students who don't have COVID.
Okay, thank you.
Board members? Tom, the scenario you just explained, which is again tied to the Department of Health saying that if someone, and then I'm referring to the scenario where someone is quarantined and not vaccinated, and they do the testing, and if they test negative, they can come back in. Does that require any intervention or any acknowledgement by the Department of Health? Or is this like automatic based on this process?
So that's the test to stay?
Yeah.
So the test to stay process would be that when a student tests positive, their name goes on a list provided to nurses from the County Department of Health. So that would trigger the ability for the parent to opt in to test to stay. So it is a back-and-forth conversation with the, our nurses in the Monroe County Department of Health, that, you know, student A is quarantined. Those would be the students that would need the daily rapid test for seven days after the date of exposure. And just to be fair is that like if the Department of Health puts the student on quarantine five days after they were exposed, then they would only need two days of testing because they would be off, they're only getting testing on the days that they are quarantined. Does that answer your question? So the question is like, yes, our health department and, I'm sorry, our nurses and the Department of Health are in conversation of those students that are doing test to stay, and their test result has to be inputted into the database that goes to the Department of Health and the State Department of Health.
Got it.
So they monitor each time we give a rapid test. They're monitoring what, who, what the result is of the test and what they're really looking for.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I think it's fair is that that is an option. So a parent who has a child who is quarantined does not need to do test to stay. It's not a requirement. They may decide that they're going to keep their child home under quarantine. And, and that could very well happen if they have a child who tests positive, their other child is quarantined, they might not be able to keep them separate, and the family might decide, we're just going to keep everybody home and ride out quarantine. Others might say, we want to be in school. That wraps up my presentation, and I'll turn it to Dr. Driffl for business updates.
Good. Thanks, Dr. Putnam. Good evening, board. Couple of updates from my office this evening. The first of which is just some updates as it relates to the budget development process for the 2223 school year, specifically a review of our goals and guidelines and some known budget factors at this point in the process. And then some board action for your consideration as it relates to the project approval for the Indian Landing HVAC work that we want to accomplish as a part of the second federal stimulus funds, the CERSA funds. And then if you so approve of that work, the associated design services architect contract that goes along with that. So in your board packet this evening was a document. It's our annual budget goals and guidelines and factors. It's a long report, so I'll just kind of summarize some of those items herein. The board has longstanding budget development goals as it relates to alignment, mission, and vision of the district's philosophical framework. We want to ensure that all elements of the budget are educationally and fiscally sound. We will, of course, maintain legal adherence to federal, state, and local statutes. We always seek to leverage partnerships within the community. We want to maintain program excellence here at Penfield. We want to ensure equitable access to all of our educational programming and keep technological considerations in mind, particularly as it relates to our one-to-one development program. On the budget guidelines side, class size commitments are always a longstanding commitment here at Penfield to keep class sizes reasonable, and that infers an ongoing staffing analysis, not as it relates just to class sizes, but then the whole scaffolding around the child. Professional learning and curriculum development remains top of mind, and we want to ensure that there is adequate resources for these important areas. Budgeting allocations are determined over the course of the next month as we employ our decentralized budget development process with our buildings and departments. We always seek to leverage available aid, either through instructional material aid as it relates to software, textbook, or transportation or BOSI's aid. Operational excellence relates to our facilities management, and that we're always trying to seek to be proactive and not reactive when it comes to our physical plant. And then strategic planning relates to our long-term planning process and the annual reserve plan document that we'll review next month at our December 7 board meeting. So as it relates to factors, the number one factor every year is what enrollment's going to look like because we serve a student population, and that drives everything else that we do. So this current school year, we had on Beds Day, which was a month ago in October, which is the official date that we use for enrollment purposes, just under 4,500 students, so 4,493 this current school year. A little bit less than where we were two years ago in the 2019-20 year, but up a little bit relative to last year and projected to go up again for the 2223 school year. So we gained about 37 kids this year relative to last year, and we're projected to gain another couple dozen for next year. So if you go back, you know, the 10 years visually in the chart, we're still pretty stable to where we've been. And as you know, board members, that's kind of a rarity, given the upstate environment as it relates to student enrollment. A lot of districts are seeing decreases. So we're actually trending back up again after a little bit of a decline, but still, over the long term, pretty stable. Part of the reason why upstate enrollment in particular has dropped in office is due to the low birth rate. So this is the 7,513 is the provisional live birth rate for Monroe County for the year 2020. That's the lowest amount that it's been since we started tracking this all the way back to the early 70s, so 50 years now. There was maybe some thought coming out of 2020 that the birth rate would increase, but it actually continued to decrease to the lowest amount ever. The good news with this raw data is that what we're seeing here at Penfield is that as a percentage of these live births, our kindergarten enrollment is increasing, which kind of indicates that Penfield is a bit of a destination school district for families in the county, that maybe just because they're not born here, they're finding their way here within the first five years of the kiddo's life. So forecasting kindergarten enrollment is always difficult. We do have ongoing development in the district. Currently, there's, and this is in the report in the packet, but about 240 residential lots under consideration. So there will certainly be some kiddos involved in that 240 lots, but it's difficult to determine how many, what grades they're going to be in, what school catchments they're going to be in, when those lots are actually going to be finished, so on and so forth. So we always just keep a close eye on it. But in general, the takeaway is that while the Monroe County births are certainly declining on a year-over-year basis, our enrollment is stable if not growing a little bit. Some of the other known budget factors, so every year, our ECR is the employer contribution rate to the two different New York State retirement systems. So there's the New York State Local Retirement System, also known as ERS, or the Employer's Retirement System. So that system has put out that there's going to be a substantial employer decrease contribution rate. So this current year, it's 16.2%, and next year it'll be 11.6%, so a dramatic decrease, primarily driven by the return in the stock market. Obviously, a very strong year in the last 18 months. New York State TRS, the Teachers Retirement System, on the other hand, is forecasting a modest employer contribution rate increase, so between a range of 10 and 10.5%. They finalize their rate in the beginning of the calendar year. Usually by February, we know what that's going to be. That's up from 9.8%. The system has indicated that the reason for the increase, which is a notable disparity from the ERS system, is due to longer life expectancy and their actuarial tables and greater pension benefits than they were forecasting, primarily driven by an increase in teacher retirements in the last year and a half. The RASHP health insurance rates, so we participate in a healthcare consortium with Monroe County School Districts. RASH is the Rochester Area School Health Plan. Rates are scheduled to go up 7.3%. That's the composite rate across all the different plans that we offer across the consortium for calendar year 2022. That's an increase from the 4% increase that we had in 2021. 4% was kind of an aberration with all of the delays of the elective procedures and the other healthcare slowdown. The rate decreased a little bit last year, but now it's back to kind of where we've been historically, in that 7% to 8% range. And that, but that 7% is a lot of money. So that represents almost a million dollars in healthcare premiums from Penfield Central. So healthcare is always a big part of our budget, and the fact that we already know what it is, it really helps us to shape where we're going to need to be. And then finally, for factors, on the expenditure side, we have ongoing collective bargaining. Many of our labor units' contracts are set to expire at the end of the year, so there's some uncertainty as it relates to that. On the revenue side of the ledger, there's, there's some promising news. So typically, every year, we don't really know anything about foundation aid until the governor comes out with his or her executive proposal in January. This year, in the November 15 database, the state has put forth a commitment to honor the three-year phase in of foundation aid that they started last April with their legislative budget. So this relates to the October settlement, the longstanding lawsuit in New York State as it relates to the Alliance for Quality of Education, New Yorkers seeking that full phase in of foundation aid. For it, as you know, foundation aid came into effect a dozen years ago or so when Governor Spitzer was still in office, and it never came to fruition due to him leaving the office and then the Great Recession. So what you can see in this chart is the school year, the foundation aid that the formula said would run. The second column is what we actually received, the gap relative to what we were supposed to receive, and then percentage of how much was supposed to be paid. So the legislature, this past April, committed to a full three-year phase in. And next year, they're indicating that they are going to continue that phase in. So we are, would be currently due under the formula next school year in the red there at the second bottom row of 2223, $23.5 million. And the indications that they're giving us is that for formula aid, we're going to receive $19.7 million. we're going to receive $19.7 million, which would still leave us with a substantial $3.8 million gap. But that 83% paid relative to the formula would be the highest it's been since the formula ran. So, we'll continue the advocacy in this domain. I know it's been a part of the legislative committee work that's been done on behalf of the Board. But the early indications are, as of this past week, is that it looks like, you know, the state is at least at this point committing to obligate those funds for school districts. For the local funding side, it's a guaranteed certainty that the allowable levy growth is going to be capped at 2%. Right now, the way the state calculates that CPI is that it's a January to December calendar year calculation. So, we won't know what the final number is until about mid-January when the Bureau of Labor Statistics releases the December inflation report. But right now, from January to October's report, it's running at about 4 and 1/4. So, it's an absolute certainty that it's going to be capped at that 2% growth. Other factors in the levy calculation are still to be determined, such as what our pilot payments are to be, what the tax-based growth factors will be, which accounts for new permitted growth within the community. So, this would be something we review in January. But this, I think, speaks to the need to revisit the formula and advocacy that the fact that inflation is over 4% up to this year, but we're capped at 2% annual growth. It becomes a problem when this is happening. You could see in the last 10 years, since this has been into effect, there hasn't been any inflation over 3%, 3.2, 2.4, but nothing like we're seeing now. So, we're not immune to the costs and shocks of inflation and supply chain pressures and then the labor market pressures as well. So, we're going to have costs associated with this. And the fact that we can only raise 2% relative to CPI can be a challenge, but plenty more to come on that. So, those are our budget updates. The other consideration for you this evening is the CERSA. So, that's the Coronavirus Relief and Response Supplemental Appropriations Act. That was the federal stimulus that was passed last December. We've obligated some funds to do HVAC work, capital project at Indian Landing. We've completed a SECRE analysis in conjunction with our attorneys and our architects. That's the environmental assessment. It was a negative declaration, which indicates that there's no adverse environmental impact to do the work. And then within that resolution is project approval. It's a fully funded grant by the Federal Stimulus Fund. So, there's no general fund money, local fund money, no costs associated to the district, fully funded as a grant at that $3.7 million authorization. We're hoping to get that submitted to the Department of Office or the Department, State Education Department Office of Facilities Planning within the next month or so. They've promised that they're giving expedited review to these federal stimulus projects. So, we hope we have word soon. We can go out and bid it as soon as spring to hopefully do this work come next summer. But more to come on that. And then within that project, there are architect fees associated. So, we have a proposal in your packet this evening for consideration as well. So, looking ahead, Monday, after we return from Thanksgiving break, we do have a project public information session here at the high school down over in the Commons. That's at 7:00. So, welcome the community to come out and learn a little bit more about our capital project. At our next board meeting on December 7th, we'll review the annual reserve fund report. We'll spend a little bit of time walking through that. As Dr. Putnam mentioned, we have the community project special vote on December 14 for our 2021 Transportation Facilities Project here at the Penfield High School Gymnasium from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and absentee ballots are available. And then after the calendar turns to 2022, we'll start to take a further look at budgets, starting with the governor's executive budget proposal scheduled for mid-January at this point. So, any discussion and questions, board members?
Any questions? Lisa?
Diane, on the stimulus project for Indian Landing HVAC, are the professional services also covered as part of the grant provided?
Yes. Yeah, so that's within the grant itself. Yep, and there would be construction management fees down the road. That would be associated, any legal fees, any permitting fees, any of that kind of thing. But yes, that amount is contained within the grant.
Great, awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanks, Dr. Driffl. That concludes superintendent reports.
The next item is a approval of a SECRE resolution for the Indian Landing project that Dr. Driffl just mentioned. As presented tonight by Dr. Driffl, and detailed on your agenda, be it resolved that the Board of Education as follows, resolved by the Board of Education as follows, one, that the proposed project does not exceed thresholds established by 6 NYCRR, Part 617 State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE. Two, the Board hereby determines the proposed project as a Type II action in accordance with the SECRE regulations. Three, no further review of the proposed project is required under SECRE. And four, the proposed project to be funded entirely by ESER and/or GEAR allocated funds at a maximum cost not to exceed $3,761,989 is hereby approved. And five, that this resolution will be effective immediately. So, may I have a motion and a second that this resolution be approved?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. It is recommended that the Board approve the change orders that you have presented to you. The above change orders have been reviewed by and are supported by Architect Vic Tomaselli, Project Manager Gary Huffman, Clerk of the Works George English, and Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance Dr. Dan Driffl. So, may I have a motion and a second that the change orders as described above be approved?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And this is, the next one is a motion to authorize the contract with SEI Design Group for the Design Services. And this is again related to the Indian Landing HVAC project. The SEI Design Group has submitted for approval a proposal for the necessary design and construction administration services for the CRSS, CRRA-funded Indian Landing Elementary HVAC Upgrade Project. The total project budget approved by the grant finance sits at $3,750,989. The professional design services proposed calls for a fixed total fee of $297,600, which is equivalent to 7.9% of the estimated project costs. SEI Design has provided a proposal dated September 30, 2021, detailing their services and fees. This proposal has been provided to the Board and approval is recommended. So, may I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to negotiate final terms and enter into an agreement with SEI Design Group for services related to the federal stimulus project as described above?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is an appointment of a hearing officer for a Section 75 proceeding, whereas Section 75 of the Civil Service Law provides for bringing of disciplinary charges against certain civil employee, service employees, and for suspension pending the determination of such charges. And whereas the superintendent of schools has preferred disciplinary charges against an employee who is entitled to the protections of Section 75 of the Civil Service Law, and the Board has discussed such employee and such charges in executive session. And whereas it appears that the disciplinary action against said employee may be warranted, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School as follows. Section 1, Alfred Rico is appointed as the hearing officer to conduct the hearing and to prepare findings of fact and recommendations as to the penalty and to report such findings and recommendations to the Board of Education at the conclusion of the hearing in accordance with Section 75 of the Civil Service Law. Two, the superintendent is hereby authorized to suspend such said employee without pay as permitted by law and/or the collective bargaining agreement. Three, the Board of Education hereby authorizes a superintendent and school attorneys to make all necessary arrangements for the hearing. The hearing should move forward as expeditiously as possible. And four, that this resolution take effect immediately. So, may I have a motion and a second that the Board approve the above resolution?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no visitor speaking time. I will just remind visitors for upcoming meetings that the visitors may sign up to speak at a meeting by emailing the district clerk, Sharon Urkfits, at surkfits@penfield.edu with her name and address and phone number and topic they wish to address. The registration will open at 8:00 a.m. on the Friday before the meeting and remain open until 3:00 p.m. on the Tuesday of the board meeting. Speakers are expected to identify themselves with their names and address before presenting and limit their comments to three minutes or less. A total of 30 minutes will be allotted for visitor speaking time, and the Board will not be responding to comments during that session. Please be aware that we are listening. And finally, all speakers, sorry. We ask all speakers to model the conduct we expect from our students in school daily. Thank you. Okay. Next is the Monroe County School Board Association Committee Meetings. The first one is Information Exchange.
I was there. Information Exchange was very interesting. It was a presentation by members of the Holly Central School District, which is a member of the Monroe County School Board Association. And they are a pilot school for the new New York State Seal of Civic Readiness. And so, this pilot has been going on all year. And then they're using information from all of the pilot schools to determine the specifics that school districts can decide to offer their students. In, basically, just in short, the New York State Seal of Civic Readiness would be an opportunity for students to get a seal by graduating. There's a number of things they have to do. A lot of it is participation in government, learning about government in their community and how they can become part of government action within their communities. Typically, the SEALs in this as well, the Civic Seal of Readiness, can replace a Regents exam. It can replace one of the two social studies Regents exams for a student who might struggle with that. Although, the biggest thing we learned is that the New York State Seal of Civic Readiness is really all about history, government. And so, from their pilot, they do not see students who would get this seal would be students who wouldn't be able to successfully pass both of the social studies Regents exams. So, interesting, just exciting to see a local district be part of this process and this pilot. And at the end of the year, we'll learn more about what New York State is going to roll out on the specific determinations for the potential New York State Seal of Civic Readiness. The end.
The end. Any questions on the information meeting? Next is the Steering Committee Meeting, which is the Monroe County School Board Association Steering Committee. Barb, are you there?
No, because it got canceled. And it was supposed to be a Zoom, and then it got changed. But what we had to do was look at the proposed papers and get our thoughts to Becky. And I did that.
Right, thank you, because that explains why I can't recall it. I'm trying to remember, what was that?
Well, you were a little busy at that time.
And then finally, labor relations.
And I was there.
And you were there.
And I was there, as was Steve Kenny there. The presentation, actually, was very, very well done. Staff retention in trying times. And it was Michaela Peraldo, who is the Assistant Superintendent at Gates Chaillie, and then Gerald Lee DeLala, who is the Assistant Superintendent for HR at Brockport. And right off the bat, the very first slide was staffing shortage. And here's some statistics that they presented. According to the United States Department of Labor, in the next five years, which is 2024, 41% of the U.S. labor force will be over the age of 55. And 1/3 of that age group will be over age 65. Baby boomers born between 1946 and '64 will be out of the workforce within 10 years. The pandemic acceleration, acceleration, sorry, staff quitting the workforce and retiring is the highest it's been in decades. And then baby boomers are leading with 3.2 million more of them that retired in the third quarter of 2020 than did the same quarter of 2019. So, there were a lot of, you know, they gave both school districts how are our employees feeling and how are, lots of things. And the biggest thing is that they sent out surveys. And one of the questions was, what do you need to feel emotionally safe upon returning to school? And many of the answers were assurance that my health and safety are a priority, masks enforced, clear guidance regarding policies with mask vaccination and quarantines, colleagues support flexibility, and support from administration that they understand stress teachers are under. And then what do you need to be effectively, to effectively support students upon, ah, sorry, return to school? Supports for mental health, staff collaboration with counselors, social emotional learning, higher morale, time to establish routines and build relationships with students, and permission from administration to slow down teaching of content. We, you know, as a former educator, none of that surprised me. They also, Brockport has an exit separation survey and that we ask all staff to fill out upon leaving. And here's the data that they have, that people who were leaving, this is based over the last three years, less than one year in the district was 20%. One to three years was 20%. Four to nine years was 7%. 10 to 14 years was 18%. And this is assumed, assuming that at that, that they were leaving then because it was a second career. 15 to 19 years, 11%, 20 to 24, 13%, and then 25 years or more, 11%. I mean, it was a very, I would highly recommend anybody to like, see the presentation because it also talked about monetary things. As I'm, you know, I'm preaching to the choir here in terms of subs and in terms of teaching professionals that they can make more money at McDonald's than they can being in the schools. And so, what Gerald Lee and Michaela then said was that what we all need to do is to reinforce to people applying for jobs here is, well, look at what we do have that McDonald's doesn't have. And so, that the health and dental envision, paid time off and school breaks, flexible scheduling, New York State pension, you know, employee discounts, all those kinds of things, as well as the employee assistance program. So, the overview was, it was very well received. Lot of interaction about other districts saying what they're doing to try to, you know, build up morale, build up, you know, appreciation of employees. And they even gave examples of how they did things over Zoom when they weren't able to be together. So, it So it was, I was just like, inspired, but also appreciative of knowing that all educators are there to support each other, and that's what we need to do, and we need to applaud that, and we need to keep encouraging that.
Thank you. Any questions on that or comments on that? Thank you, Barb. I think that's, you know, I think very timely and very important. You know, I would just say that the fact that baby boomers are retiring is not a secret, and it's not unanticipated. I mean, it's something people who study demographics know. I think the expectation was there's always adequate staffing and resources to fill the gaps, and it hasn't happened, which increases pressure on the existing staff and creates stress, and it becomes self-perpetuating. And it's not helped by the fact that it's hard to get resources, it's hard to get people from out of state into the state, and I think there's been a lot of advocacy by many groups, the Board of, the New York State Board of Education, I'm trying to think of, the United States School Board Association, as well as Monroe County, as well as superintendents, and everyone's been trying to make it easier to get people eligible to be hired, to help relieve that stress and trying to replace people who are leaving so we can be adequately staffed and to reduce stress on the existing staff. So, and that's just something that we just, we keep working on in many different ways. So, you know, thank you. I think that's, really sums up the current situation very well. Next up, upcoming Board of Education school tours. This is something that the school board does every year. We tour the facilities to see how they are operating in terms of the facilities meeting the needs of our, of our district, and in looking at projects we just finished, current projects and upcoming projects, so we have a good handle on the capital needs of our district. And so we will be, on December 3, Friday, December 3, we'll visit Cobles and the High School. On Monday, December 13, we'll visit Indian Landing in Harris Hill. And on Thursday, December 16, we'll visit Scribner and Bay Trail. I know it's during the day, and, you know, hopefully, as many people as possible will be able to attend, you know, and make arrangements with work, but that is just one of the things that, you know, sometimes works out and sometimes doesn't. There's no unfinished business. Is there any new business? Seeing none. May I have a motion and a second that the meeting be adjourned at 7:23?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned.